Statute.
One of the things, Rachel, that I was thinking is that leave it in there for them to have, but don't, but basically you don't have to say it.
Yeah, don't have to quote the number.
Right, right. And I guess what I was also thinking is that maybe we should also have Howard address the fact that, because their staff is suggesting that they provide some funding just for the assessment of our...
Aquifer testing.
Aquifer testing, thank you.
I have it written down.
Okay. So, because that, if that's done, that's one thing, but then if they make us go back and apply again, that's more cost, more staff time, their staff time, our staff time, so that it would be much more cost effective to move beyond that and to go to the full 50% of this time. Again, just to keep pushing that 50% of this time.
Yeah, when we did meet with them, staff is still recommending to fund the aquifer testing, no questions asked. They will fund that. But we've said to them, well, if that comes back positive, which we, positive meaning it's good to go, and they give us a permit, we said, well, then we need to go right into the design and permitting, and that needs to be funded at 50%. And they said, no, you have to reapply. We said, no, we're not going to accept that, of course. I presume you agree that we didn't accept that. And so the statement we're going to make, again, is the aquifer testing is fine, you want to fund that, that's great, but if it turns out that it's, our project is good to go, we want to move directly into the design and construction and get on with it. That's the message.
And have the funding for that. The other thing that I was going to suggest is that we do have a letter from Congressman Rooney.
Yes.
And Nancy's, where I was looking at your section, the, where you talk about the economic impact, these are not, on page six. That perhaps you could actually read the letter. I was hoping that maybe Leah would be able to join us, but I never got feedback from her to read the letter from Rooney. But he focuses specifically on the economic impact of our project. The other thing that I will be picking up this afternoon is a letter from Representative Roberson, and that might also be an appropriate place to bring it in, or depending on where that might be appropriate. So, just keep pushing it and see how we, how we go.
I thought the letter was excellent that they returned back to us. It was very good.
Wonderful, wonderful.
And Leah was very instrumental in...
I'm sure she was.
She was.
I'm sure she was.
Well, maybe she'll come. We can still, we'll send her a message, see if she'll come.
And we're definitely inviting everyone who would like to come, and we're wearing blue, we're wearing blue for water, for clean filtered water.
Thank you for mentioning that, I might not have...
I don't have blue.
Blue.
Wearing blue.
Do we have a dress code?
Hey, people come here dressed for their cause, why shouldn't we do the same thing, right?
We have a dress code.
It's a theme. Powerful theme.
I have a blue shirt.
A blue tie will do.
A blue tie will do, blue tie. Okay, so send the changes today.
If you have any substantive changes, yes, send them to us.
For what we want to hear in the letter, that they're going to, the packet that we're going to hand to them.
Correct.
Okay.
If you're okay with this, that's fine, if not...
I think the letters are important, I really do. I think it's important that they know that our congressmen, senators, and representatives are...
The letter's been sent.
Yes, it was sent directly to Carlos Baruff, so they should have it.
But we still, if you want to read it, that's...
Absolutely, or at least read in part.
Yes.
Pick out the... Yep. I made a note here, I'll print that off and make sure I have that with me.
And again, we don't know whether the other governing board members have received it or not.
Yeah, because they're like us, right? They, everyone has a vote, so they do operate in the sunshine, so I'm assuming that anything that gets sent is probably, I'm hoping that it's distributed.
Well, that's why we're going to give them all this.
We're going to read it.
Yeah, exactly. And probably the letters need to be incorporated throughout the packet.
Yes.
We can.
We're wearing blue also to represent the blue card, the blue card group, so the blue has a double meaning, Tom.
Is there a shade of blue?
No, any shade.
Okay.
Are we okay with the three-minute allotment? If we, if we all read what's, what's here, has anybody looked at the time that it will take for each of us to read?
Well, mine is short.
Yours is short, yeah.
Mine is short.
But there's a note.
I'm going to condense it down a little bit.
You can do it in three minutes.
I'll have to rehearse it.
Yeah, three minutes.
Even with the letter, yours is...
Now, one of the things that you might want to look at is the comments that Baruff made on, I guess it was the March 25 meeting that we did the presentation. And again, he spoke to the issues, and he was responding to other questions about our project, but I think they are also more amenable to doing the aquifer testing first. And I think, again, I think that has to hit hard, Howard, that we go beyond that. But you can watch it on video now.
Well, I remember when we were there, the chair brought up the Phase 1 pipeline, remember?
Uh huh.
And the Phase 1 pipeline in 2006, that was the priority from the Water Authority to connect plant to plant. It was never built. What was built was the Phase 1A interconnected. The Phase 1 interconnected was, since it was directly plant to plant, that would satisfy in the staff's mind and the board's mind, multi-jurisdictional. The Phase 1A somehow doesn't. So, the chair, Carlos Baruff, brought up the fact that, you know, why don't, why don't we just, why don't we do the Phase 1, and, and then we could do the Punta Gorda project as well? Well, that's not our, I mean, we have no decision in that. It's a decision between SWIFTMUD and the Water Authority. If they want to go ahead and push the Phase 1, we're great with that, we think it's a great project. But that doesn't, you still need to deal with ours as well.
And that's been, how many years have we been going through this with the Phase 1? 10?
Well, 2006.
Eight?
Eight years. Eight years. So, I don't know if that's going to come up again or not.
Well, I assume that Tom Jackson is going to be with us.
Yes.
Yes, he'll be with us.
Well, he's one of the drivers.
Good.
Yay!
But again, I believe that Tom can be, can respond to any of those types of issues or questions, so I feel, feel comfortable in terms of having our staff there.
Is the significant difference between 1 and 1A, is that one is plant to plant and the other one is distribution system, distribution system, is that the only...
It's a big difference.
Mm-hmm.
Big difference. And the fact that if it's plant to plant, then at that point, 2006, we were going to supply our water to the Water Authority, plant to plant.
And we're still good with that?
Yes.
Yes, we have, again, it's a fine project.
So, in addition to the basin board, there's another decision that was, that's not been made that's impacting us.
Anyways, the Vice Mayor did the yeoman's work on getting this thing started. I just added a little stuff.
Great job.
Thank you.
Really good job.
I just cut and pasted all the pieces that we had preparing.
Good cutting and pasting.
Let us know if there's any substantive changes, we want to print this and get it ready to deliver with us tomorrow.
Okay.
And we're going to do it on individual sheets with each of us identified?
No, no, we're going to do the whole packet, it's one packet.
I know, but I thought you were going to do each presentation and...
No, we figured easiest thing is to put it all together under our letterhead, that way they have it in one packet.
Okay, that sounds good.
I agree, yes.
Doesn't have to get loose.
And you'll identify people by their name and title?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody all right?
Okay.
Okay, we're moving to new business.
Might we take a break?
You want one?
Five minutes?
Five minutes?
Five.
Five minutes, five minutes, we're going to take a five minute.
Howard, remind...
I don't want to look at it anymore.
We've got more work to do.
Thank you very much.
We have more work to do.
Yeah, we've got to set it so it stays connected.
Are we to leave these here?
I'm going to put it away.
Okay.
Ready? Okay, we are back in session, and we were continuing under new business, discussion regarding directory ground signs for medical campus properties.
For the record, Terry Tab, zoning official. I brought this in for discussion with the, the hospital doing a new ownership and change of name, they needed to reface their signs essentially. And when I started looking at the locations of the existing signage on the site and the refacing that they needed, you know, in relation to, like, you'd need one on this block, one on that end of the block, in order to effectively direct people to all of the various services and buildings that, that are owned by the hospital and provide the medical services. And when I looked at the directory sign portion of it, it required directory signs to be at least 50 feet from the right of way. It's like, in this instance, that is not going to provide any help whatsoever if you've got to drive into each area to find out what services are there. And ground signs needed to be at least 300 feet away from each other. And with these small city blocks, that really was not realistic either. And what we are suggesting is that staff get direction to go forward with some language specific to medical campus properties, so that they can have adequate signage to provide the direction that the, that the patients are going to need without just being overkill. And so we've just drafted up a proposed draft, we will need to review it at a deeper level, but I wanted to make sure it was okay with council before I did too much.
Did you come up with those rules, the 300 feet and the 50 feet?
No, they were... I didn't make those up.
I'm just teasing. Yeah, I mean, that seems, like you said, they shouldn't have to, they should be able to see it from the intersection at least before they need to pull in.
Yeah. And, and that's kind of what we were getting at with, with a lot of them. You've got, these are, this, you know, for the emergency ambulance's main entrance, you know, you're at a corner here, where they are providing the direction that, okay, if you need to get to this, this is, this is the corner that you're, you're going to need to turn. And, and another thing that actually makes this area a little bit more confusing to some people, if you're really not familiar, are the one-way streets, because if you end out on Marion, you've got to go that way, and the reverse on Olympia.
Yes, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it, too.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
I had just had one question on the last item, number eight, very last page.
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about letters shall not be more than three inches in height and shall not be legible from any public right of way?
Those are the directory signs that have to be 50 feet from, that's what it currently says under the directory signs. And so that would be more for a large site that everything is close to a center point where you, there's nothing out by the road and everything is on a single site, and then you made it a directory once you're in there as to what floor on a building or something.
And that's the current code, and this is where it's changing.
That is the current code, yes. Yeah, because that just didn't work there.
So, a directory sign is more or less on the property, not at the intersection?
Yes, that's correct.
The ground sign is what you show there with the directional...
Yes, some of those were ground signs and some actually were the smaller, they fit, they fit within the size of a directory sign, but they didn't meet the regulations of a directory sign. So, and looking at that, we just wanted to make it so that it was more realistic for the conditions that exist in, at least in Punta Gorda.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have discussion regarding small informational signs for various paver donation projects in city parks.
Okay. This came up at the February 19 city council meeting, where there was the discussion of the paver donation programs, there, one of them is located within Gilchrist Park at the Ponce de Leon Fountain. There is actually existing, and I'm quite honest, I didn't even know it was there, this little box, and it is for the conquistadors to put in informational brochures, that people can go up and, and take one. There was no, nothing in it that day, but, so the ability is there for this particular site. I went over to the Veterans Garden area, and, and within this area, there's a little corner just over here, that's just off of the main area, that you could easily put just a very similar little low to the ground where the informational brochures could be put in there, because it doesn't have to be anything large, but that would be a place that could be used there realistically. When I went to Lashley and started looking at the situation, the, the difference that we have at Lashley is everything is hardscaped around the area of where the pavers are. You've got the fountain, when you get to this side, there appears to be electric running on this side of the sidewalk, and you really wouldn't want something there that could create a trip hazard. And everything here, other than the tree wells, are pretty much all, all bricks. And so staff looked at, at, a place where somebody was new to the park, because quite honestly, I didn't know exactly where the pavers were in Lashley Park. And so when I went, was walking into the park, I, I went, and when I went by the bathroom, I kind of scanned the signs there to see what was there. And so when I went over and found the pavers and looked around, in my mind, that would have been a logical place for information to be. And I think something next to the informational sign that's already there would be a good location for the information for those pavers. And so it's for council consideration and recommendation.
I guess I had, the question I had of, do we know if the boxes work? I mean, do they, I mean, does anybody respond? I mean, do they? Okay.
I know, officially.
Good.
Suzanne McCormick is here from Team Punta Gorda.
Let's let them keep their box. Let's make it legal. I think that is an excellent idea, because then people, I mean, if they're at the park, do they necessarily have paper, or maybe they could take a picture with their phone or something like that, but to actual take the paperwork, I like that idea better than putting up more signs, personally.
Yes, yeah, that was great. I went there first and said, hey, what a wonderful idea.
And then if anything were to change, the contact information or anything like that were to change, you wouldn't be having to redo a sign and go through all that rigmarole. So, I definitely like the information box approach.
I'm not particularly...
I'd like to consider some alternatives to that, because I think that, while it could be an advantage, I, I'm not sure that everyone would agree that that's the right way. I know that I spoke with Team Punta Gorda, it's a beautification committee, and they're not in favor of that.
Not in favor of what?
The information box. So, I guess they're in favor of a sign, a small sign that could be placed in a tree well near the pavers, so the people walking by might be able to take a picture with their cellphone. A lot of people are there, they don't want to have someplace to put, you know, necessarily take a piece of paper and put it in their pocket kind of thing. So, they're looking at more from a, a convenient standpoint. And I understand, I, the point you make, Terry, is a good one, if you're new and you go to the restroom, you might see it there where you might not know where the paver is. But then when there are a lot of activities in the park and people are walking by, and if there was some small sign there, it might catch their attention as well, so...
I just think there is so much activity in the park that a freestanding sign is not a good idea, in my opinion. But, Tom, did, do you have something?
No, I was not in favor. The sign that is shown there in front of the restroom, I wasn't particularly pleased with that. I, I'm wondering if, you know, if the, the object is to try and get people, the information to buy pavers, people are looking at a paver, for them, even for the first thought process to get into their heads, why not put a paver in the ground and say, if you like this paver, you can buy another one, here is the address?
They are there, there are pavers that are there.
So, why, then why do we need more? Or maybe we need a few more pavers? I, I don't, I'm not excited about the idea of signs going up and more pamphlet boxes going up, things like that.
Well, let me put it this way, not everybody takes the time to look at every paver, so they might not see the paver on how to buy one. Every bit, every dollar that is spent on the pavers at Lashley Park, at the interactive fountain, goes to beautify the city of Punta Gorda. It's not kept in Team Punta Gorda's treasury. It's spent on us, because we don't have beautification budget. We used to, when I was on the beautification committee. We had hundreds of thousands of dollars in it, but that's gone.
I, I mean, I don't think anybody disagrees with the vow of the program, but...
Well, we've always felt that it's like tying your hands behind your back and saying, thank you for, for raising the money and helping us out, but you can't advertise. And that just rubs me the wrong way. And we need to be supportive of that and, and help them raise more money, and so that in turn it can help us. And so I, I think some small sign is a very simple thing that we can do that can help perhaps generate more funds.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't think a freestanding sign is a good idea, I really If it's been told that the information boxes do work, I wonder why that's not even being considered.
We weren't allowed to do anything, so I don't know.
Let us have our discussion and then...
Well, we weren't allowed to do anything as Team Punta Gorda when I was involved.
Except put the paver down with the information on it?
Correct, that's all we were allowed to do.
Any other comments you want to hear from Suzanne, or...
Well, I'd like to hear from Suzanne.
Okay, Suzanne.
Suzanne McCormick, Team Punta Gorda, beautification chairman. As many of you know, I've spent a lot of time at Lashley Park, more so than probably anybody in this room, and I know what people do. They, when I'm putting in a paver, they come by and say, oh, that's really great, where can I get one? Well, who do I go to? The same thing in veterans. They say, well, I have a veteran, I want to do something, I really have no idea in the world where to start. I mean, we all think everybody reads the paper, everybody knows what's going on here, it's not really true. And so my thought was always, the person going by wants to know how to sell, or rather buy that paper, paver, and if we had just a very small sign that would say, to sponsor a paver, contact Team Punta Gorda and their website. We're not selling it, we're not pushing it, we're not being over aggressive about it, it's just, you've looked at these pavers, you like them, here's how to do it, boom, 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 rather than, oh, that's a nice paver, and the next time they go to the bathroom or their kids go to play, maybe then they find out about it. The other thing about the boxes, and it's fine if they like them at Gilchrist, but when I go by there, if it is raining, they get wet, they really get wet, and they also have to be filled regularly, otherwise they're worthless. So, from my perspective, I really wouldn't want one there. And I do think, right, a small sign, and I'm talking a small sign, not, I'm talking small, as small as possible, right? The size of a brick maybe, even look like a brick maybe. We have five bricks there that say, Team Punta Gorda sponsors this program, and nobody, you know, they've lost in the 287 that are there now. So, if we could put just a small sign by one of those trees, that, that would be our ideal. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry, would there be any way to maybe, you know, like a metal plate? Could it go possibly like on the curbing, on the ground, without having to be on some kind of post? Like, like kind of, don't we have some by trees, almost like a...
Urban Design Joan LeBeau, yes, we, we looked into them when we were looking at the signage for the dedication plaques that we were going to put, and they do have some that can go on the curbing in that area. There, you know, there's a little process you have to do, but it can be applied and it's not very hard.
And it would be...
You could make it the size you want it to fit within that curve.
To fit within the curbing? Maybe that's something to consider.
Where would the curbing be here?
Where's the curbing?
It's around the tree wells.
Oh, okay.
It's not a curbing, it's a banding.
Oh, okay.
It would, but it would stick out, if you did it the brick color, or I mean, or another color, you could do it some sort of a metallic, the metal color finish or something. We could, we could look into that, but at least it would stick out.
And then it would be right there, too, where I would be okay with that.
Okay with that.
We could look into it and see what options.
If we looked then also at the Veterans Park, Veterans Garden, again, I think as you were saying, the boxes need to be filled. And so if they're not filled, even on the box, it should say something for information or whatever, you know, whatever the website is for the veterans, veterans group. But I like the idea of the small plaque rather than a box in which materials get wet and messy and moldy and whatever.
Okay, so if we put something by the trees, is it, is this, are you talking about a sign that sticks up? Or are you talking about flat?
Flush to that piece of curbing around the tree well.
Perfect.
Right there, right by where they are looking at the pavers.
Yep.
And it would be substantially different so that it hopefully would catch their attention.
Okay.
And I think it might be better, because it's in closer proximity to the actual...
Right. Well, it's just a lot of kids are playing there, so I'd hate to have something sticking up, because they're running around like, I spend a lot of time there, so...
I spend a lot of time there, so I know how kids get, my brother got injured jumping up trying to hit something and injured himself on a sign, so...
Right, right.
But it's, it's really just trying to draw the attention of the public so they can get the information.
Okay. Can I make another comment? Could you bring back the Ponce slide with the signage? Now, that's a very big sign, and we say we don't like signage, and that one is, that just hit me as like, why are we doing such big signs?
And why do we have two?
Pardon?
We have one on each side.
I know.
Well, the ones for roller plating and skating, boarding and...
The only thing it doesn't say is, is no breathing.
Why don't we just say no kids?
Can we modify, take down that tall one and put whatever else you need there? You got, no, what, no skateboarding, roller plating?
Do we have the liberty to, to change these?
Do we have the liberty? I'm sure we do.
Sure.
This does not look attractive.
It does not look attractive.
No, it doesn't.
Thank you for bringing to our attention, right.
And I'm there all the time, and I didn't...
Yeah.
We're not seeking any grant funding for this, so there's no applications that...
No PPM requirements.
We will take care of it.
Thank you.
I, I think whatever the conquistadors have found works for them, I'm more than happy to let the conquistadors continue that, so...
We're selling first.
That's what counts.
That's right.
So, are we okay with it now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're okay with allowing that, and maybe they can come up with, you know, something that fits their needs, yes.
Would you want Suzanne and her team to work with staff on, on that?
Sure. Especially if Joan's already looked at some of the options.
Yeah, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so then 7C has been postponed, and we're now on to 7D, discussion regarding the display of animals at events held in city parks, and I don't know how many times we've had this discussion, but we're having it again. Right, Howard?
We are. The rental season has ended for the Arts and Crafts Festivals, the one at least that puts on these, those that we're talking about. It'll start again in the fall, they usually have three or four a year. They include in the Arts and Craft Festival in Gilchrist Park, a tiger. Now, the tiger is not being misused or, or, not misused, abused, we, there's no indication that it is. The policy question is, and there is a group of folks, more than one, less than 50, but there's quite a number of them, that complain about having a tiger in a cage in an Arts and Crafts Festival. When, you know, now we're allowing dogs along the Harbor Walk, and, and it's to raise money for the Lions, Tigers, and Bears Foundation and Wildlife Center. And, and they do okay, that's why they bring the tiger. If it's too hot, they don't bring the tiger. So, as we get ready to permit the Arts and Crafts Festivals again next year, we want to let them know whether or not we have any issues whatsoever with them bringing the tiger to the event, so that we can respond once again to the folks that will send us emails complaining.
So, are we singling them out, because other people have other animal rescue exhibits in their events? So, how are we going to say, for instance, the Hibiscus Festival, they have an animal rescue group that they want to have as part of their event, so...
Do they have an animal?
What kind of animals?
Does it matter? I mean, I know what it is. I mean, I know what it is.
Yes, that's what we're talking about. It does matter.
Okay, so we are going to specify then it's Clydesdale horses and rescued horses?
I mean, is the concern that if a dog is walking by and starts barking at the tiger, that the tiger might be able to get out of the cage? I mean, is it a safety issue?
That's...
Could the tiger get out of the cage?
Hold on for one second. Do you have something to say?
Lisa Hannan, zoning coordinator. I was just going to say what was in the application for the Hibiscus Festival is rescued horses, horse rescue for other animals in the park.
But they're not going to have a horse there?
Pardon me?
Are they going to have a horse there?
The Hibiscus Festival, they are going to request to have a horse there. This goes to DRC Friday and will come to City Council on the seventh.
Because they are supporting this animal rescue group and they're invited them to be part of their event. So I'm saying if we're going to start opening this can of worms or whatever, animals, we're going to have to really, if we want, be specific, I would guess.
Well, I will tell you, I have a concern of having big animals like that when there's dogs in the park. If, if that horse gets spooked by a dog and takes off, or I don't know if the tiger can get out of the cage. I mean, that could be really dangerous. Really.
Dogs technically, they're not allowed in the event. They're only allowed on the harbor walk.
Technically, you're correct.
Technically, you're correct. But I have seen them.
But other events in Lashley are dog friendly.
Lashley is a dog friendly park.
Right, and there have been other animal rescue organizations.
There have been pony rides in Lashley Park with some of the festivals. And there have been other...
There were pig races. There were some pig races.
That is correct.
So we've had multiple animals.
We have.
Okay. Come to the podium and state your name, please.
My name is Lynn Whitmire. I'm with Lions Tigers and Bears. To address the question of safety, we are regulated by the USDA, which is the federal government, and the Fish and Game, which is the state government. They check us in all capacities. They check our travel units. And we are in total compliance, total compliance.
Thank you.
Sally Muir, and my promotions. I'm the promoter for the arts and crafts shows. And we have had Sampson with us now for three or four years. We've had Sammy with us for 10 years. He was a large panther. They're in the cage. They do not get out. They do not get transported from a van to the trailer. They come enclosed in the vehicle. And as far as addressing goes, people saying that you're mistreating the cat. Have you ever tried to pull a six, a 300 pound cat from his cage in their home into a trailer? He is wanting to come. He enjoys the people coming. And when he gets restless, she will know. And she'll pack up and she'll go home. I have no issues with that whatsoever. People request to see it. They're upset and sad when he's not there because she doesn't come to all of them. He doesn't travel very far. But it's just been a really, I think, good event for people and for us. And for fundraising for them because they have to feed them all.
Thank you. I'm okay with what we're doing now. We haven't had any incidents other than one group writing emails.
Right, yeah. And sometimes actually they, they get out there with their signs and it's kind of, you know, it's...
It's good to say if I'm okay.
It generates revenue to give the animals a better life. I really have no problem with it. We've been doing it now for years and there hasn't been any issues. So I'm fine with it.
I talked with my friend Sandy, who volunteers at Octagon. And they don't take their animals anywhere because their, their feeling is that these are abused animals in the first place. And a lot of them have, and I know I've seen other abused dogs, whatever, that it's a hard, they get, have a hard time getting over whatever that is that caused the abuse. And so they prefer to leave them in their environment they have there as opposed to taking them places. And, and then try to take pictures, brochures, and other things and, and other means to provide the fundraising, to make people aware of what's going on. And to, if you want to see the animals in person, then please come and see us. So they have a whole different strategy about how they go about it. And so it's, you know, there's a case to be said that, you know, there are other ways to approach it.
So...
Right now, for the last few years, we have been approving this.
Yes, and we've talked about it every single one of those years.
Well, not anymore because now the way the policy reads is it doesn't have to come in front of council.
Right. And we made that conscious decision, I think, the last time we had this discussion. So...
Stop bringing it in?
Let one of the council members bring it next time, Howard.
I'm, I'm fine with allowing it. You know, I know, I'm sure that the children have an opportunity then to see an animal up close and personal. And it does make a difference for them too.
As long as it's safe, I'm fine.
As long as it's safe as, as was indicated, if the animal, if they sense that the animal is not happy, isn't, that she has to, you know, to leave. That's an important part too.
No, we've, we've already addressed the fact that they're not being mistreated. That's done. That's not the issue anymore. We're over that.
We're, we're okay with status quo.
Okay.
So Lions and Tigers and Bears, oh my.
Okay, now we're on to seven E, which was one B three, which is a presentation by New Operation Cooper Street.
Good morning. Chris Ballinger, president of the Board of Directors for New Operation Cooper Street. And thank you for allowing me to come for a few minutes today. I know that we have been in the news a lot in the last year. It's been an interesting year. And just wanted to update you on, on what's going on. And first of all, thank you very much because the city of Punta Gorda is a tremendous source of support for New Operation Cooper Street and has been for many years. And I want you to know on behalf of the board that we very much recognize that and appreciate Beginning with this summer, in the month of June, we will be having a new camp for the month of June. We're limiting it to 60 students who are currently enrolled in grades K through five. And it's going to be an ecology camp. So there will be a lot of hands-on science activities. There will be field trips. There will be a lot of opportunities for the children to really learn about the environment in our community, where they're living, and all the different opportunities for them here. So we are, are very excited about getting that started. Camps in the past had primarily been more daycare. And so we're, we're going in a whole new direction and really getting a lot more educational value for it. The camp director is a science teacher with Charlotte County Public Schools who has also in the past directed summer ecology camps. So she's experienced in doing this kind of work. We're also, the Study Partners Program has been a major component at New Operation Cooper Street since 1986. And it is a very good program that's had a lot of strong community support. We rely tremendously on our volunteers who come and work very personally with one-on-one with the children or in small groups. And if the kids are academically behind, they're tutored, they get their homework done and things like that. But as you all know, education has changed drastically in the last five to seven, eight years. And so we are, we're going to keep the best parts of Study Partners and we're going to kick it up notch. We now have six educators on Board of Directors. And we are working to align the after-school program with what the children are doing during the school day in their classes. They will have access to the same computer programs that they use during the day, which will provide us with very specific data about their progress, what they still need to master, and how to help them get there. And we'll be able to stay in touch, not only with the parents, but also with their teachers in the schools about how they're doing as they're working with us. We are looking to more than double the number of children served. And we hope to have over 100 children at New Operation Cooper Street by the time everybody's back in school in August. So we're doing a lot of marketing and, and fundraising. The next big fundraiser will be the Giving Challenge through the Sarasota Community Foundation at the beginning of May. And we are actively involved in making that a strong push through social marketing, social networking. So we will probably, you'll probably be seeing a few things from us about that in the next week or two. We're also have been working on doing more outreach into the community. I think that perhaps in the past, there's been more of a, a lack of relationships perhaps with other, other groups and organizations. So we've already been talking with the folks at the Housing Authority. We have met with the Chief of Police. We have, Harry Chapin Food Bank is now using Cooper Street once a month for their SNAP program. And the, the Mobile Homeless Coalition is also there once a week as a, as a site to help homeless folks get services that they may need. So we're, we're really working at reaching out into the community. And as we continue to solidify the programs that we currently have for the children, we're really looking at expanding more intergenerationally and, and getting Cooper Street back to really being a true community center that serves citizens of, of all ages. So we're, we're starting small. And fiscally, we should be able to hire an executive director this summer. Once we know exactly how many children we have enrolled, what our cash flow is at that point in time, we certainly are not going to hire someone until we know that we can meet the, the salary obligations. And, but, but we're looking good. We're, we're taking in more each month than we're spending. And we've got some grants that we're working on, including the, the Community Development Block Grant. I've been meeting with Cherry about that and continuing, as I say, to do other fundraising opportunities. So any questions?
Have you, have you partnered with CHECK, the Charlotte Harbor Environmental Center?
We'll be doing that through the camp this summer, yes.
Okay, because they're having, they're having a teacher camp and they're having a kids camp too. And they have a lot of materials that they have donated, like Fish and Wildlife.
Right.
And they basically have, you know, low, I think their teacher camp is like $25 for registration because they've gotten so many items and materials donated. So they are a good resource...
Yes.
For curriculum materials and educational. And I would hope you would take a field trip out there as well.
We're planning to.
Okay.
Our, our camp director is good friends with a couple of the folks that are out at CHECK.
Okay, good.
So that was at the top of her list.
Thank you. And what about Drug Free Charlotte? Do you do much with them? Because they're really starting to do community outreach as well, based on the needs assessment and some other, you know, things that have happened there.
We haven't yet, but I work about 60 yards down the hall from their office. So thank you for the recommendation. I'll be sure to stop in and talk with them.
Okay.
You said that, that you have, you want to make this multi-generational.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have facilities there that people could use. Are you trying to reach out to the entire community?
Absolutely.
Like you have a tennis court there?
Mm-hmm.
That, I don't know how much is used, but I know...
I know I've seen folks on it. Most of the time when I'm there, it's when the kids are there. And so generally, the public is not using the tennis court during those hours. But I have been over there when, when folks have been on it. So, yeah, we, we really do want to, we really want, if you, in the materials I gave you, you'll see our new mission statement. And it talks about that we're a multi-generational center located in the Trabu Woods neighborhood and serving Charlotte County. And so that's, you know, we're looking at going from, from the center out through the neighborhood and embracing the, the community as a whole. So we're, we're taking baby steps right now, but, but we're looking to, to really, you know, two or three years from now, hopefully have that building and, and the facilities, the grounds being used six or seven days a week, 15, 18 hours a day.
You might consider painting pickleball stripes on your court.
I've heard pickleball is getting very popular.
Very popular.
Very, very popular. It's very, I think the courts are heavily used in Gilchrist.
Okay.
And that could draw people from the community over to...
Sure.
Cooper Street if they know that they're there.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Absolutely.
And that would help then make, create awareness.
Any other comments?
Delighted that Cooper Street is moving forward.
Thank you. So are we. And, you know, we're always open for recommendations or suggestions and certainly for, you know, we're always looking for volunteers and opportunities to do things for, for the kids in the community.
Thank you.
You did get a grant for the camp, right?
Yes. Oh, thank you for reminding me. I also want to publicly thank the members of Beyond Ourselves, the group from the PGI Civic Association, because they have been major donors to New Operation Cooper Street over about the last five years, close to $100,000. And they've provided the seed money for the camp budget for this summer as well as dollars for operating expenses going into the new year. This year, their donation was $20,000, which is just fabulous and much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Recommendations from city officers. Howard?
Nope. Nothing further.
Debbie Clark?
Under boards and committees, we still have our code enforcement board alternate and our Historic Preservation Advisory Board alternate seats available. And we have a seat on the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. We have five interested parties if you would like to nominate them.
Nominate all?
Second.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. So we'll be voting on that at the next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. It's good that we have that many interested people.
Yes.
Very encouraging. Okay, next we have policy and legislation. And I just had a question that I wanted to confirm. Is, when is Gilchrist Park construction going to be completed? Because the Hibiscus Festival is May 16th and 17th.
Hibiscus, it was, it was, it will, it's scheduled to be completed before the Hibiscus Festival. They will be out of the park before unless, unless we get a huge amount of rain and it holds them up. Right now, they're scheduled to be out of there.
Okay. You're going to keep monitoring that situation?
Yes, yes. They should be going down Durin Street by then.
Okay.
My neighbors are asking. They need to be out of the park. They're working their way, they finished to Harvey, now they're working their way to Gil, along the edge there.
Right.
And they need to get, you know, we want them to get cleaned up and out of there.
And they know that.
Do they have an alternate plan?
I don't know if they have an alternate plan.
With the Hibiscus Festival?
Yes.
Right now, it's, it's on go.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right.
I think that was all that I had. So let's start with Nancy.
Well, you've already seen my, my souvenir. So that's, I want to commend our city manager for a great city manager's tour bicycle ride last Saturday. It was great fun. It's the first time I got to do this in a long time. And it's interesting seeing our city from the pathways. the pathways and as opposed to driving in my car. It's great. What we've done with this community is just tremendous. So, thank you.
Great. I just want to let everyone know that our brochure is at the printer, and we are not going to need any city files.
Yay!
Very good. Very good.
So that's my news for today.
See what happens when you ask, though, when other people start.
I know.
Getting the message. Tom?
Howard, I'd like to note that the, let you know that the Airport Authority has agreed to contribute $1,000 to the One Community, One Message brochure.
Awesome.
That's excellent.
So we'll be getting more.
And will they let us put them in the airport? Did we ever resolve that?
That's not, that's still a work in progress.
Okay.
But they were a little disappointed that the pictures of the planes weren't a little bit bigger, but, you know, they still agreed to go with the $1,000.
Okay.
Additionally, tomorrow, I'll be on the Ken Lovejoy Show.
What a pleasure.
Yeah. With me will be the Director of Fundraising for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall. And he's going to be explaining to the community where they are with collections. They've collected quite a bit of money. They're up to $18,000 now. The price of the wall has been negotiated down, just the material, the granite, has been negotiated down to about $80,000. And they're going to start to advertise it and showing people that we now have $18,000 against the $80,000 purchase price of the wall. And it doesn't seem such a formidable task as raising the 250 or 300 that was out there before. So hopefully, that will bring in some fundraising results tomorrow as well. One other thing, I have, I don't know if any of you have been having a problem, but when I send out my weekly report, for the last several weeks, for the last three weeks, anybody with an Embark mail or a CenturyLink mail has been coming back to me as undeliverable. I don't, if any of you have had that kind of a problem.
Well, I had that in the very beginning when I took those names from Bill.
You gave me all the Embark mails?
And I gave, I gave you the ones that were rejected from me, and now you're probably.
They were working for, for months and months and months. And now, all of a sudden, over the past three weeks, they keep coming back. And I have no reason why.
And it's intermittent sometimes, too.
Yes.
Are you sending from a Comcast?
Yes.
Because I know I had, I still have Embark, CenturyLink at home, but was using them for email. And I could never get, most of the time, never get Rachel's emails, and had a terrible time. And I got blacklisted by Comcast. So I had to go through GoDaddy, who has my domain, and to really get taken off their blacklist. And it's an issue. There's their issues, I've learned, with Comcast and with Embark. So I don't distribute mine through any of that. I use an email service to avoid that. And I don't seem to have any problem with that. So I would suggest if you are having problems, you may want to consider using a service like what I'm using, and it's free.
It's unfortunate that we have issues between Comcast and Embark that are conflicting the, these distribution of me emails, but I guess.
Well, when I talked with GoDaddy, they said it's really, they agreed that all of this is just, it's nuts. And they have, I wasn't the only person that was having problems. They said a lot of their clients, subscribers, have issues.
And you know what I found, too? Like lately, I've gotten, Dorothea Zisco will write me, and I'll reply to her, and it won't go. And sometimes it, like immediately, when I hit send, ding, it's already back again. And I'm going, it didn't even go anywhere or do anything.
That's the same thing.
And it's bizarre. And then I have to send them to Karen, to send to her, and it's kind of, it's a problem. And I don't, and I have iCloud for my email, but it's to the Embark mail people that I have the issue, the same thing. And when I send my weekly, like that same thing, it'll ding right back so quick. And there'll be five or six names that says, "undeliverable" or "rejected as spam."
Howard, could we have IT look into this issue and see if there's something that they can come up with and give us some guidance here?
The initial call that IT made was that Comcast and Embark, CenturyLink, or Coraling, and they have not worked out their differences yet. But yes, we'll stay on it. But there are some issues between them.
Is it MailChimp?
Well, Doc.
I use MailChimp, and it's free.
MailChimp.
It's called MailChimp, and you can, it's free up to 2,000 email addresses and 12,500, it's, mailing's to 12.
MailChimp.
It's called MailChimp. MailChimp.com.
Another exotic animal.
I know it's an odd name, but anyway, it's free up to 2,000 email addresses and 12,500 emails sent to per month, which you would never get that high. And it's a little, it's not as easy to use as Constant Contact, but it offers more capability than Constant Contact, like you can attach files and things that you can't do with Constant Contact, and they don't charge extra for photographs and things like that. So there are other things that, you know, it's better, but it's free. And.
But obviously, you have to plug in all of your email addresses.
Yeah, and we just got done doing all that from Bill. I mean, that took me a month.
If you have, if you have a list that you can put your email addresses and names, you have to, you have to have first and last name and the email address. If you can put that in an Excel spreadsheet, you can upload it to them in one process, one step. And then you're not seen as spam either. Because that's one of the things I know, in email, what got me into trouble was emailing the women for the Women Build. I was emailing continuously to the Women Build team, and that's what got, that's really what got me on Comcast's list, because I was emailing to the same group all the time. And it was crazy. The steps I had to go through to get off of Comcast's blackmail list was.
Were we too quick in giving Comcast that proclamation this morning?
You know, I actually talked to Justin and, about it, and he said, "Man, I've never heard of anything like this." He, I said, "Do you have any suggestions?" And so he was very, very gracious about it and, you know, embarrassed. But actually, you know, I followed steps that were in some of the emails, but I had to talk to GoDaddy as well because I wanted, because that's who I have my domain with. And I said, "Help me out here. What's going on?" And they can see things because of their connections that I couldn't see. And they could see how they were viewing me and what was going on. And.
That's amazing.
And I got to tell you, I've spent hours and hours and hours with a lot of different companies related to Comcast trying to get this issue resolved. And it's not resolved.
I know.
Right. Well, this way, when you're going through an email service, it's not going through your, it's not going through Comcast. It would be going through an email service so that it's, you're circumventing that even though you're sending it from your computer, it's done in the cloud.
Right.
Just doesn't seem like something we should have to be doing. So I'm hoping something more positive will come out of some research by the city staff.
Thank you. Anything else, Tom?
That's it. Thank you.
Carolyn?
Well, I would like to know what are our next steps with our tablets, and if we could have a joint training program.
Well, not everybody has, we have two council members that still have to do their thing with them. When that's done, then we will.
We definitely had a lot of issues today, so we have a lot of work to be done.
We've got work on this, definitely.
Yes.
The one I had did not work at all.
I don't like this.
So flunked that one.
I mean, I could see the agenda. I couldn't see any of the attachments.
None of the attachments popped up either.
We have work to do.
Did they, did it work for you, Rachel?
Yeah. No, once it went to sleep, I was off the VPN and couldn't get it back on. It did initially when Jeff, this is the iPad. So of course it works.
I know.
Initially, it worked.
And don't we all like the touchscreen, too, with the iPads? See, that's the problem with the other ones, is that it's not as intuitive, especially if you have to use the mouse and be over here when you really can just, because at RPC, you probably view the.
It drove me crazy when I used the Windows 8, because the touchscreen, unless you have a mouse, you really don't get the full, to use the full capability of what the Windows 8 tablet is like. And I sat there at the RPC meeting just because I didn't take the mouse with me. And so then they gave me a pen, a stylus that I could use, and that was better. But it's the enhanced keyboard with a touchpad helped. But it's really like a full computer.
It is. It's like a laptop rather than a tablet. Yes.
And so I said, gee, I might as well just take a laptop. But the size of it's better. I'm just used to my iPhone and how responsive it is and more intuitive.
And I'm on the city's website a lot on my iPhone, and it's, it's fine. I mean, I usually have no, no problem accessing whatever it is that I need to. Anything else, Carolyn?
No, I was trying to take your pictures.
Okay. Now, we're getting to citizens' comments. Please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. And please abide by our rules of conduct.
Steve Fabi, I just like the comment, we talked about bricks down at Gilchrist Park. We, most of our fundraising is actually, we do a scholarship every year. We give $1,000 to the three high schools. And this year, actually, it's going to be doubled. We're going to have two students because one of our members passed away, and his wife wanted to set up a scholarship. So we're doing it through our organization. So she's collected $3,000, so we'll be donating $1,000 each. So that's basically what we do with that brick money.
That's very nice.
Excellent. That's great.
Good morning, Railroad's PGICA. At your request, our board met last week, and we have endorsed the land transfer between Bucky McQueen and the city with the easement to be granted. And we'll be providing a written copy of the statement to you within the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? We are adjourned, 12:18.
Aren't you going to use your new?
No, I'm thinking at home. I gotta use that.